Mm-hmm. And open one more person.
At 3:00 P.M. I notice that we have budget committee members here tonight. I want to thank you for your work. And if you'd like to say something before we get started, you're more than welcome to. I think we're addressing some of the issues that have been brought up, and I do appreciate your work. Anybody? Item number two will be the discussion of the FY 2026 budget. Yes, sir. Yep.
One thing we'd like to do is getting boots on the ground with the evaluation for the town profit. What we feel, some of the folks here have done some investigation, is that there's a lot of profit that's not hit the books. And we feel like we'll see in the budget that we've asked for more money so we can get the council ready for the college evaluation. By the meantime, we feel like it's been a lot of work being done at a lower level with boots on the ground to try to get some of the profits on tax nets.
I addressed that with the town manager earlier today, and there is a plan going to be put in place to do just that. So, yeah, we will be working on that. Okay, you're welcome. George, anybody? Okay, page one. Any questions on the town manager's budget? Yes, sir.
I have a correction that needs to be made on the town manager's budget. Line item 11, professional membership, is going to be carried over. That should have $400 in it for the town manager's request and the budget committee request. It's on the actual sheets themselves, but it didn't carry through.
So that's 400 from the budget and 400 from the manager?
Yes, and also while we're in this correction mode on the capital for the public safety building, I stated that I was moving over his furnace from the public safety building itself to the capital for the public safety building, and I neglected to put it into the capital for the public safety building, which was $42,800.
What pages are on this?
I'm going to find it here for you. Page 95.
So the furnace will not be in the public safety building?
No, I did take it out of the public safety building, but by the time I got the capital, I neglected to put it into the capital.
Page 95.
The bottom item on 95.
Buildings and grounds. And that's, what's the number?
42,800.
95. Yes. Yes, $400. So our rent here in this building was up $2,500 this year?
That's correct.
That's all? Yep, you all set with that? All set with management? Yep. Okay, 0101 clerk. The percentage that you're putting in for, for non-union?
5%.
What is it?
5%.
5%. And all these numbers reflect 5%?
The increase, the non-union increase is done as a lump and not into the various departments.
Okay. That's 5% across the board?
For non-union full-time, yes.
And on the town clerk, the part-time wages went down about $3,000.
Dan.
0003, second line under clerk. Approved was 9,042.
Yeah, I think, no, I think that includes my election wages and my election wages. That went down.
It did.
Yep.
Down to $3,000.
No presidential election, no extra election this year, so.
In the 219, 496, the wages, how many people does that include, Dan?
Myself, plus three full-time, and Marcy who is a stewardess, she's full-time but eight hours a week goes to dental.
So four full-time, one part-time, 132 hours a week.
But she is a full-time employee, and when we come to the 5%, she'll be counted within the 5% because the other hours in the week they get at a 40 hours, she is at public works.
Any question on town clerk?
$100, is that going to be addressed?
None of it's around town. It's all dependent upon where the classes are. So when I calculate out the classes for any of my employees, I always have to go to Augusta because I never know exactly where the classes will be on. It could be terrible. It could be Augusta.
Well, they have to probably settle with the internet.
Some can, but not all of them.
And what's that?
It is, and then we also find that people prefer to go in-person because they get more out of it going in-person. Yeah, it is. It's one of the things that's been networking with the government, for example, that you don't necessarily get in front of the class, so.
I guess we should have a push-pull to the microphone because if this is being broadcast, even though it's gobbled, we really ought to be able to hear, so. Anything else on clerk? Dan? Okay, finance, page two. And I see audit fees are up to $114,000 this year instead of $66,000.
That is with
Oh, you've got a mic.
I have a microphone, yeah. That is due to the contract we entered into just this past fiscal year. We were estimating last fiscal year. This is true cost as of this year for two audits.
And will that catch us up to our audits where we need to be?
Yeah.
Questions on finance?
Lori Ireland here for a while helping. Currently, we have Ed Barber, who Rick has put part of his wages in his line item, and part of them are under assessing. He does assessing work for Ruth. He's helped her on several projects this year. And if he's not busy doing that, he will ask Cindy and I if we have any filing or anything like that to do, or Rick will get him working on a project that he needs to have done. Those wages for half of Ed's time are now in Rick's budget. Part-time, 20 hours. And he has them. Does not under the spend of his time.
Also, what is included in the equipment maintenance at 69,240?
Part of that is the Motor Brain contracts we have with them.
When is that expired?
It could expire anytime. We have a longstanding contract with them. We do not maintain our own server. We do not maintain our own backup with them. They are currently, they were hosting our Trio before we switched to Trio Web, and now they are continuing to host Trio Web with us, which has actually saved us in the past couple of weeks because Trio was having an issue with their server, and it was kicking people throughout the state off of Trio. And we did not have the same issues that everybody else was having because we're not hosted on Trio's server. So we weren't losing customer transactions at that point. It also covers a part of our Trio license, everything except for what is considered economic development, which is in the TIP budget. So it's split right now about 50/50 between the regular budget and TIP. It covers half of our internet connection where the town building. Ruth covers half of it in TIPS because of what we're using here in the council chambers for economic development, and the rest of it is internet that we use throughout the town buildings for work. And then if we do have issues with the phone system, I pay for that. If we have to have tech support, if we have to contact their tech support to fix the issue. And it also covers the maintenance contracts we have on all of our copiers. The maintenance contract covers replacing toner, any repairs we need to have made to any of the copiers throughout the year. And that's about everything that's covered. Email is also a charge now.
From Motor Brain?
Yes. And that's a charge that they just pass on to us from Microsoft to have the email addresses in that domain.
Can you tell me the total that we pay Motor Brain, including the $2,700 that they're on call? Annual total for Motor Brain?
Hold on, I have to turn my calculator back on here.
No, that's fine.
$51,240.
51,51? When was the last time we did an RFP on, on our internet services and saw if we could put that up to bid?
For the Motor Brain services or for internet?
Both.
Well, internet, we just got the fiber connection through Spectrum, which enabled us to drop, stop using the, the slow free service over at the library because that was not working well. We had to have the fiber for web, for Trio Web, because we were going to lose transactions if we did not upgrade our service. So that was just done about eight months ago. I checked with all, anybody else in the area that was offering fiber at the time, and Spectrum was the only game at the time that would connect us here. For Motor Brain, we have not gone out in a long time.
That would be one suggestion coming up in the year, in the year coming up, that we go open. How many times have we had to have them for an emergency this past year?
For an emergency?
Yeah, because we pay them 27, is it 2,700 a month?
I, I can't say how many times we've had an emergency with them in the past year, but we do have, maybe once a week, we have to have them over here. We have printer issues.
But that's during business hours?
Yes.
But we pay them $2,700, is it a month?
Yes.
For them to be on call?
For them to maintain the server as well and to be on call for us, yes.
Okay, I just read on call. I didn't see maintain the server and that in that line.
Well, we pay for a spot on the server, but they also have to maintain, servers need a lot of attention as far as, yeah. So this is them in the background doing things for us as well that we don't even know about.
Okay. That would be one suggestion I'd like to, to make is that we, we go up to bid to see if we can get a better deal or what have you. And I noticed that we have an internet connection at the transfer station. What do we run at the transfer station for?
They wanted to be able to use the computer down there. They have a computer. If they need the email or anything like that, they needed internet connection down there.
And I'm not saying if Motor Brain's the best, if they're the best game in town, fine, but I'd like to know what we, what we have for options. In, in an actual RFP, not, you know, calling people up and saying, hey, can you do it? But have an RFP, what we expect them to do for us and have their responses for the council to see. Thank you. Anything else on finance? Assessing? I'm sorry, Mr. Manager, I didn't ask. We talked directly to the employees. We have talked through you.
You, you absolutely have my permission to talk directly to them.
I saw, make sure.
Yeah, that's fine.
Ruth, how much of your wages are captured in assessing, how much is captured in TIP?
The wages that I have captured in TIP were put in there as the economic development administrator.
Okay. But you split your wages. I see $25,000.
No, that's Ed Barber's wage.
That's Ed's wage.
That is not mine.
Where is, where is your wage in assessing?
My wages in the TIP budget under contractual expenses. These effects also in there, but I don't think they're itemized out.
Probably couldn't report Mary, goes up again.
It would be in the economic development budgets and the TIP is under the line item 0108.
Good.
It has 235,000. That also plays for environmental engineers, return fees, and a lot of other things that come up through economic development.
Can we have that listed out what that pays for?
I can, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else on assessing?
Well, last year, we wanted to add a part-time job. And then train. Well, that's not going to happen.
I can't say that it is because Ed Barber was hired. He split between Melissa and I, and he is an retired person that's coming in to work on a part-time basis, just, you know, to, to, to. Yeah, I can't see him training, being already retired at the new setting. I didn't say that. I didn't say that. The only thing I have in the capital budget is they are setting aside money for the revow that, that hopefully when the bids come in, we can set up and have a schedule for that to happen.
Okay, code enforcement. We have travel expenses in here, $3,900, and we've been talking about, I don't want to get to police yet, but we've been talking about police cruises and what have you. And the used cruises that don't have very many miles on them, should we go on the lease program? One, I want to know how much that's going to save us, but two, those vehicles can be used in other paths where we already own those vehicles.
Yes.
Then there wouldn't be an expense there. So there wouldn't be an expense as far as $3,900 for travel.
I think not, but I would put a couple of details of that. You've just said the police cruises that don't have many miles on them. There's little not much that fits in that category.
Well, we have three. One's got 35, one's got 53. We got three, chief. I didn't want to get to you this quick.
Right.
We're still in code enforcement.
Yes.
Yeah, as of May, there's, or sorry, as of April, the end of April, one had 163,000, which is Stu, the one Stu drives. I pick him up often. Then 118, 113, 95, 92, 52, which is the SRO, so we continue to keep that. And then there's one with 22,000 on 133,000.
So we got, we got three that we keep in, that we could use in town should we go with this other deal. So we got, we got three that we keep in, that we could use in town, should we go with this other deal? So that's what I was kind of thinking, that a bunch of committee member brought that up to my attention. So I thought that rather than buy new vehicles, you know, we could, we might go that way.
There's no proposal here to buy new vehicles for towns to have.
I, I know that, but if we get rid of the travel in those places, and people don't have to use their own vehicles to go to trainings, and, you know, like we had for the electric vehicle that booged out halfway back to town that day, you know, these, these ones would make the trip probably.
Probably.
You know, so just trying to think ahead a little bit, that road, so.
Oh, yeah, so. Yeah, I mean, I think several of them, I mean, other than the one that Stu's driving right now, and then the ones that have, one that Stu's driving right now has about four thousand dollars worth of work in the last year. And then the one that has ninety-five, the one that has ninety-two have about thirty-five hundred of these.
And on that lease program that I'm reading about, that wouldn't have this.
What do you mean?
We wouldn't have that seventy-five hundred dollars in, in repayment.
Right, 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 right. Yeah, I mean, the lease programs seems like it, we could talk about it later.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
Now, may I say something about this line right now?
Absolutely.
So this does say that in waiting here, he was doing dam and lake levels, I mean, others not doing. If you want to reduce that line, absolutely, because I would not use all thirty-nine hundred dollars for that, because everybody's doing their dances.
So what would we reduce that thirty-nine hundred to? We'd just be putting that money into some, but someone's going to do dam and water levels.
Absolutely.
So that's why I'm saying, if you want to keep it there for that person to do that, fine, but I won't.
That's up to.
Right.
I, I think that's as good a place for it to stay.
Yeah.
It won't be long, we'll have a full-time code officer.
Yeah.
But at the moment, we don't.
But we're still going to have to have someone do the dam and lake levels.
Yes.
So. Sure you don't want to do lake levels?
Well, I mean, I went through the other part of it and I think that was a nice, that was, that was a good time, but I don't, I don't think that's.
Anything else on code enforcement? Least about that. I know this isn't your first budget meeting, but welcome to our first budget meeting.
Right, well, it's a little different.
Anything else?
Right, right. Well, soon we will. I, so today, he passed his psychological, so.
Perfect.
I got a one that's close. So there's four positions open, so that would be, so if I hire this one, and I have another one that has a psychological next week, I'll, I'll only be down two. Yeah. Yeah. I have two sergeants, yep.
One sergeant.
Mike Winslow and Darren Mason.
Okay, okay, yeah.
And that, I mean, we had a lieutenant previously, I think.
Right, that's right, okay.
Yeah.
Why is the reserve staff?
Good question, so right now, we have one reserve officer. I mean, I have it in there to do two, I have it in there as twenty-four. I came, kind of came up with a scale for reserves, depending on their experience, right? So, and reserves, I'll be honest with you, are almost a thing of the past. It just, it takes too much to train them. I mean, we have one reserve now, and he serves a great purpose for us, he does a lot of training with us. But I mean, there's just so much training that you have to keep up with, and the policies and everything like that, it's hard for, for reserves. And if you do keep one, and he's a new person, he's not going to stay, he's just going to find the next full-time job, and that's easy today. Yeah, so it goes through a five-year plan. So basically, this was a couple of years ago, they did this. So basically, every year, they get that two thousand dollars, that potential. Just something extra, instead of bonus money at people that come here, you know, I think it's really important to track.
So Chief, on overtime and part-time wages, it's up fifty-eight thousand dollars. If we fill those two positions, are we going to be?
So what I looked at was the best-case scenario, right? Right now, we're running bare minimums on things, so we're running one person at a time, which is not really the safest thing to do.
We've always wanted to.
Right, so this, this budget actually reflects, that's what that would look like now. Whether or not it can get there, it, it takes time, right? So it takes time to, to train, it takes time to get people on the road by themselves. I mean, we'll hire this officer, hopefully in the next couple of weeks. They're going to go on the academy list. The academy list, as of Friday, was a hundred and four. They take eighty people now, they used to take six. So they take eighty people now. So I think they'll still get in, but it'll be close. So if he doesn't, but if I don't hire him, he can't get on the list.
Right.
So it'll take it about, once you get that person, goes to the academy, they'll come back in December, they'll be training for three or four months, and then they'll be on the road. So we're, next time, like, by this time next year, they'll finally be by themselves. No, the two that, well, one's, the one that's in the pipeline has no training, and then the other one has been a corrections officer, but some.
That's, that's training.
I, I would much rather be a police officer than.
Me too. Yeah, that's training muscle, believe me. That's learning life on the street. It's all. Well, that's where I was looking to, to cut some out of the budget, Chief, was that overtime and part-time wages. And then event wages at twenty-one, three, fourteen, don't we have event wages in the tip budget?
I think that's where the manager took, reduced that some too, Dave. That is what Rick has reduced it by, is what was in the tip budget.
Yes.
Where are we at?
Event wages.
Our process was that, keep it the same.
My thought process?
No, well, I'll.
Oh, okay, yeah, fine.
Yeah, we, the event wages were already in the tip budget, so, but we recommended cutting whatever was in the tip after the budget. There's only twenty-five hundred dollars in the tip fund for department request for event wages for police. There's only twenty-five hundred dollars. Well, that's breathing tip. Am I missing something?
We had a discussion with Sean on the number of days we have events and bands. One of the things that he was promoting was sponsorship. And so we threw out the recommendation that if you can get the sponsors and fifteen thousand, which is what it's thrown out, we suggested with that money, come on to the event. If you get people sponsored, then we'll make it a two or three day event. If you can't get the sponsors, we didn't think that.
Pretty much the event wages is prematurely filled in as an increase of twenty-one, three, fourteen.
Do you hear them?
Um, Mr. Manager.
You are looking at this within the police budget?
Yeah, in the police budget, zero, one, six, zero, event wages. Department request twenty-one, three, fourteen. Manager request fifteen, two, eighty-three.
Yes, and I reduced it, as I think you can see. There's a definition problem. We have events that are sponsored as events, but there are other events that aren't really sponsored as events, but they happen, and we still need police, like for a parade or things like that. You can group the two together if that's what you wish to do, or you can leave it sort of as it is.
So fifteen, two, eighty-three is what the manager requests, and then twenty-five hundred in tip. So around seventeen, seven is what you're looking at, instead of twenty-one, three, fourteen.
Much of my thinking there is that while the requests for police officers at some of these events would take us to the higher number, they really don't have the people.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the overtime thing is certainly, it's hard to gauge it, because there's, there wasn't any method to kind of figure out where overtime's going. I have a way to do that, that's later on the budget, we can talk about that, but yeah, so that certainly.
Professional membership went from three thousand dollars to thirty-five thousand dollars.
Yes. So. So there's a lot of things that, that happened, so obviously, with the way policing is now, it's a lot of things that are technology-driven, right? So some of this, for example, online training, the, that nineteen-hundred was just in a different lineup. Before, it was in professional development, and I didn't think it belonged in there, I thought it belonged in the membership part. Some of this has to do with our policy management that we had gotten before I had started. So basically, Power DMS, I think, I'm kind of familiar with that a little bit. So basically, it's a, you know, it deals with all our policies. We pay a company to deal with all our policies and update our policies. You know, that's kind of important, it's hard to do that nowadays with the, with the ever-changing policies. I mean, for example, you know, there's two thousand, over two thousand bills in the legislature, and several of them had to do with law enforcement stuff. Somebody's going to be constantly paying attention to that and, and changing those policies. So we have somebody that does that now, that'll actually go down a little bit, because the policy development was the first part of it. It will then just go down to a policy maintenance next year. We have a police app, which deals with trying to, you know, get applicants. Sometimes it works, it's just another avenue to work as far as getting that. The two big things in there, that I think that I had recommended and aren't in there in the manager's request, are the scheduling software and the evaluation software, both of which, so I talk about scheduling software first, that's going to help us with a couple of things. One, right now, everything's on a board. Literally have to go look at a board and things are written on it, and that's how we do the schedule. That, that should be a way to be able to look at the schedule, I should be able to look at it, know who's working, know how to fill overtime, know where overtime's going, that's going to help with that sort of stuff. Now, it's six ninety-five, that's part of that is the setup cost of it, or six thousand nine hundred ninety-five, part of that's the setup of it. I talked to them about that, and there's a way to reduce that a little bit. That's again with the early intervention thing, the evaluation software. This is just a way to track performance and track the ability of how officers are doing, and be able to make sure that the sergeants are evaluating people right, making sure that we're following up on that. It's really, I look at it as a liability reducer. Because if you think about this, if we don't, we don't document things properly, and people aren't doing things properly, it's going to come back to bite us later on if we do have a problem with an employee. And, you know, we're not properly documenting things, we're not properly evaluating our people. I think this also helps with our use of force, it also helps track the pursuit stuff as well. And, you know, it really helps with that sort of stuff as far as being able to make sure that everybody's on the same page as far as the, the admin. So one thing that we could do to reduce that is, you know, I have some extra, extra money in the budget right now, you could, we, they were able to split that and basically do seven, seven thousand, seven, seventy-four right now, and do seven thousand for the following this, this budget year, so that would cut that in half by both of those. And then basically, it would go to, you know, a maintenance of keeping it going at four thousand dollars. So that's one way to save a little bit of money for that.
So this is seven thousand dollars upfront, within four thousand dollars a year for the maintenance?
After the first year, after, after the first two years, basically, all, if I did this, cutting this thing, so there's six thousand nine hundred ninety-five each. All right, so basically, if we paid for half of it now, and paid seven thousand, seven, seventy-one, that would basically pay for it for next year, and the following year, there are going to be four thousand.
I made a recommendation for what eight, two thousand dollars to be reduced from. What, what was that, is that?
That's those two software programs.
Those two software programs, so taking those, that's, that's for luxury.
Yeah. We might not need the animal control either, because of the association being out that that costs a lot of money. But that would take a hundred fifty, if we end up staying with not set down.
So, so I'm not saying that we're not going to get it, but we need it this year. Scheduling software in the early intervention evaluation, how have we been doing it with all paper?
Yeah, it's on.
Well.
So the scheduling software. So the, the scheduling software, I've been using the scheduling software for the past eight, nine years, I mean, it makes a huge difference. I mean, it, it deals with overtime in a better way, going to have less grievance issues. Not that we have many now, but as we get more people, we're going to deal with it better. I think it's going to be able to allow people to ask for time off better, we can manage that better. But there's just little things like that that I think will make a big difference. I mean, to me, I think it makes, makes a lot of sense. It helps us get to where we need to be, you know, and then, you know, kind of let those off. Certainly, I did ask for a loan.
You don't ask, you don't know what.
Right.
So with this, there's fourteen thousand dollars there, and.
But what I could, what I'm saying is, if I ended up, right now, if I took seven thousand and did it through this budget, and reduced it to seven thousand for both of those other, for this coming year, it would save us, you know, I mean, I have the money, I have extra money in the budget, because I have less people right now.
He has unspent money because he has not had people.
But I, I think you'll agree, Power DMS is an absolute.
Yeah, I've been using Power DMS for ten.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of people have, and that, and that is very helpful, not only to the chief, but to everybody that works there. So, and the clear system is a tool that you can't do without.
Right.
But you need, you need the was it twelve or thirteen licenses for the clear system? If the detective had the clear system and.
To be honest with you, I'll have to look at that because I thought clear was one price. I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a user system.
Okay, so it, it looked like.
Yeah, I see that it has twelve staff there.
Yeah.
I'm almost positive that it, it is what it is. So it's not a, it's not a two hundred a person kind of thing.
Because, because your patrolman running, running.
Right, well.
Traffic and, and what have you isn't gonna be used in the clear system, but the detective absolutely needs it. The sergeant could need to do an investigation.
Yeah, I will tell you, I think that's probably the lowest amount that you could probably buy there, but I can definitely get you that answer by the, the next meeting. I mean, to answer your question as far as do I need or I want it, I guess I would say that it's gonna make our jobs easier and be able to deal with it in a better performance for the agents.
But you could buy.
That's what I thought it was. So it, it is a set price.
A set price. So right now you have, you have the budget money left over in the twenty-five budget for either the scheduling software or the early intervention evaluation software.
No, so it would be ended up, it would be both. Basically what they're doing is taking that and cutting it in half. So letting me pay upfront right now and then you, they said I could pay the seven thousand for the two softwares in the fall, in the twenty-five. And then that following year, then it would go down to just that maintenance cost.
Let me understand. Right now, both of them are sixty-nine ninety-five.
Yep. So what?
We have fourteen thousand dollars that we've saved. We have fourteen thousand dollars that we've saved by not having these.
No, no, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is take this, this total amount and what they're saying is I can split that. So I can pay seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars right now out of my budget. It will pay for both of those programs. Then the, this twenty-five budget, it'll be seven thousand seventy-one dollars and twenty cents for those two programs. And then the following year it'll go down to the maintenance cost. So it's basically just sharing some costs with that. It will going every year forward after that. About that, yeah, depending on what their prices go on.
I guess we'd have to see what we have left over in that budget to see if we could do something like that or if we could buy both of those. The first year at sixty-nine ninety-five for what we got left over in this budget.
It's nice to have money left in the budget, but you still can't spend that money more than once. We, we tend with this particular budget to say, oh, we've got all kinds of money left over, so just keep going, but.
But if we didn't.
There is a point.
We haven't had, I knew we were two positions now, but I didn't know we were four positions now. So we must have quite a savings there.
Yeah, I don't have a number.
I, I'm looking to see if Brittany messages on that. She keeps track of that.
So that would be, that would be my suggestion. If, if we can do one at sixty-nine ninety-five or seven thousand and pay for the other one out of this budget, if we can pay for both of them, then you'd be even better. So.
Well, we'll have to go walk.
We've already gone to that well once, but the cameras, correct?
I think that's true.
Yeah. Which absolutely isn't needed. Equipment maintenance, twenty thousand, six, sixty-eight. There's thirty-three, forty-five.
Tell you that seven thousand of that was in a different line.
Seven thousand of.
The.
Twenty thousand?
Yeah.
So that's down to thirteen, six, sixty-eight?
That used to be in, that used to be in professional development.
So we're still up ten thousand dollars on that line. What do we, what's the, what's that equipment maintenance?
So four thousand of it is that add monitors and cameras, uh, like right now there's no monitors in the evidence room. So that adds that. It also adds it so that there's, uh, TVs and those goes for monitors in each of the monitors in each of the sergeant's office, my office and the patrol office. Right now, like if somebody comes in, they can't see who's there. Yeah, yeah. So right, so basically when I started there, it used to be you could walk right in and be in the lobby area, but that door was broken. We had that door fixed. Now they can only come to that certain area, but still you're putting yourself almost at risk sometimes looking out and seeing who's there and when you can look on the camera. There's a couple of instances where that's been a bad thing when officers don't know who's there.
So that would cover three monitors and a, and a camera in the lobby area.
Yeah, let me see what he quoted. Yeah, yeah, I mean, basically that's what it would be was the, the cameras and the, the monitor upgrade. That's what, what Motive Ray quoted, so.
Ten thousand dollars for three cameras?
No, four thousand.
Okay, four thousand for the monitors. So a camera in the lobby, three, three screens, and a camera in the evidence room.
Yeah, yeah. There, there already is cameras in the, in the, in the lobby.
The one, one camera and three?
Yeah, yes.
And that's the ten thousand dollars?
Four thousand.
Four thousand. These, uh, monitors are sold, the three monitors that, uh, have been requested.
Sergeant's office, my office and patrol. She already has a monitor.
She already has a monitor.
For that. For the cameras, there would be three cameras actually, uh, two with the evidence room. I don't know why the other ones there. I have to relook at that. He quoted for three cameras.
Three cameras and three monitors.
Yeah, and then it's, you know, he has to put cable in, cabling and that sort of stuff.
So that lines down to thirteen, six, sixty-eight and then four thousand for three cameras and three monitors.
Yeah, I can't tell you what exactly was in there last year as far as that three thousand. Tell you that that's what affordable, okay, so yeah, so the portable radio maintenance, I put that there. So that's, uh, so the one thing that I have here is the fifty-three.
Last year's.
Okay. So the fifty-three hundred, fifty-three ninety, actually, six thousand, two ninety. That's for, uh, a radio upgrade. So I'll tell you that, uh, a radio upgrade is probably thirty, forty thousand dollars. I put in for a grant that would buy the equipment for it, but it's not gonna pay for the install. So this is if we get that grant, that'll pay for the install of all, all that. Me, sorry, all that radio stuff. The True Dark, that's the machine that can tell us what, what drugs are by just pointing a laser at it. Uh, there are a little bit of maintenance to that, uh, as far as, uh, bikes you have to buy and they expire. So that's where that, that cost is.
So that's thirty.
No, that's, uh, seven sixty-four. It could be less than that.
Seven hundred sixty-four?
Yeah.
But the True Dark machine was purchased for us.
Yeah, that was a grant. That was a huge.
Is that pretty helpful?
Yeah, it, it's awesome to have. It takes a lot of guessing out of things and it takes a lot of doing it, the old bachelor language.
And you don't have to take drives over that.
Right.
Yeah, so you don't have to power the pole around it to kill it.
Yeah.
Especially the one ways.
Yeah, yeah. It's super helpful to have that.
So if we went with the vehicle, the vehicle maintenance right now, thirty-four, four fifty. But with that eleven thousand, four hundred and fifty dollar increase, would that go away if we went with this? I guess you gotta talk to us a little bit about this lease deal.
Yeah, so the, the lease works like this. So basically, uh, I looked at a couple of different lease places. The biggest one, um, the best probably one was Enterprise, but you had to rent, you had to lease ten. It could just, you could lease more than just police vehicles, but you, it had to be for that. So we, we looked at a couple of different lease places. The one that came up, came up with that eighty-one. So basically you're gonna buy a car, it's gonna cost. So to upfit and buy a new car is around seventy thousand dollars now. And basically to lease this, we could lease them for about eighty-one, some, hit some change, and we could lease five for that. And you can see where in the last year kind of a breakdown of what that cost was. So as of the end of April, this excludes like oil changes and regular tire changes or regular tire replacement. It was around nineteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars in maintenance. So yeah, you're gonna pay ten thousand more dollars for this, this car, but you're also gonna save money by not having the maintenance. And then after the five years, you get those cars. It's not like they go back to this, this company. They become ours. No, it's a dollar, a dollar. So then you can look at it a couple of different ways. You could, one, you could put them into the rotation of maybe town vehicles that use, or you can use that money. And when you lease again, you would, you could basically just save on that lease by, by buying, you know, by selling those.
Would these vehicles come completely flooded?
Yeah, that's.
Everything?
Yeah, eighty-one thousand, that's outfitted and everything.
Outfitted everything, Lincoln's logos, everything?
Yeah.
And twenty thousand miles into it, one bosom into it?
Yeah, so we have a warrant.
Okay. All warranty, just like?
I mean, if one bosom entered, eighty-five thousand miles.
Well, I just, just wanna make sure because.
Yeah, it would, the, the regular warranty on that vehicle.
You're basically buying one completely outfitted car every year, but you get five of them upfront?
Yeah.
And as you know, I have been telling you for the last few years that you, for this purpose, you've got to buy a new car here.
And a lot of places have been going through this. Uh, Prescott does it, Ellsworth does it, Doc Sport does it. It's a very, you know, routine thing that now these departments are doing.
Does this company take, if, if we had vehicles that were worth money at five years, would they take those vehicles and trade on the next lease?
You could definitely do that, yeah. I mean, in, in five years, we're not locked into that company either.
Right.
So we could go to any company that we wanted to, that would give us the best deal.
This is Enterprise.
Well, I wish it was Enterprise. We'd have to do ten cars in the next, this is a different company. Uh, we would. Just based to the finance company that would do it the best. It'll still be outfitted by like a, a local person.
So and that has to go to, I expect where they're under warranty and they're brand new, they have to go to the dealer to be, to be serviced? Or can a town mechanic service them and still stay under warranty?
Yeah, I mean, oil changes and stuff like that could be done. So by.
In our cars. We're gonna buy one every year?
I think the car's gonna go up significantly.
Oh, absolutely. So the last thing I have, Chief, aren't you glad to hear that? Contractual services at twenty-five thousand ninety.
Okay.
Um, is that legal services that we have throughout town attorney or?
No, that's the body cams.
That's the body.
And the teaser lease. Or teaser, it's not a lease, really, it's a.
Yeah. So is that a annual fee for those body cameras, twenty-eight thousand dollars?
No, the, the body cameras are about nineteen thousand a year, for that five years. So we paid the one already.
Yeah.
So basically we're down to four years left on that. This is, this is year, this'll be year two on that.
Okay, so that's nineteen thousand?
Yeah. And the taser is sixty-nine, oh, three. So all that is, is, is making sure that we all, we have all the same tasers. We had a mix of taser two and taser seven. And you know, for example, I'll just tell you that taser seven does a lot more for us. That taser two, you shoot the same part. A taser seven, you can actually tilt the, the taser and it changes the, the, how far that's gonna go. And that means how much the spread's gonna, so spread means, these didn't guys know, but the spread actually helps, you know, with that neural incapacitation. So if it's real close, they're just gonna lock up and not be able to move. If it spreads out, it's gonna make them go down. Now, we had an incident not too long ago where we used the X two, where if we had the X, the, had the taser seven, it's probably where it might have changed that, yeah.
So, uh, and also the idea, as far as long, as long as everybody's trading on the same thing, then I, there'd be a much less chance of them getting confused.
Right. And all these taser sevens will work with the body cams. So basically, when they turn the body cam on, it'll turn the, it'll, what, sorry. When they turn the taser on, it'll turn the body. Automatic.
I got one more thing. Uh, uniforms, twelve thousand three hundred dollars.
Yeah. See, I had this all in order and you went everywhere.
Trying to keep it on your toes. I'm trying to save me money.
Yeah. Yeah, let me get, yeah, so basically. So like bulletproof vest. Um, there's several people that will. I bought several this year, but I gotta buy several next year too. Uh, and then every new person needs their own bulletproof vest. You can't pass, you really can't pass one down from one versus the other. This doesn't work. Uh, so that's kind of where that cost comes from. The new officer thing. What I did, all I did for the new officer to come up with the price was I, I used the price that I, um, and this is probably a low price, but this is. I did a really good job tracking inventory in Old Town, so I could tell you what it cost to outfit an officer. So that's where that's for, you know, almost four thousand dollars.
Chief, today, uh, a graduation from the academy today.
Upon graduation?
Yeah.
Um, so some of that is the equipment that we have to buy to go to the academy, right? And then some of that is, uh. Most of that's to do with their actual equipment and uniforms are getting, I mean, one uniform's over a hundred fifty bucks of that. So, I mean, that's probably more than that. It's crazy.
Okay, now ask a question.
You got those changes? You got those changes that we made, or Anders?
I have some of the changes. I'm not sure I have all of them. Um, I've got reducing the clear to two hundred based on what the chief said.
No, you can't. That, that's the one price. It's not a two hundred.
Yeah, it's not two hundred a piece.
It's twenty-four hundred.
Oh, it is twenty-four hundred.
Yeah, it doesn't matter how many licenses.
Yeah, I think it's up to twenty-five licenses, that's why.
Okay.
The, uh, event wages were actually fifteen to eighty-three because the other is in tip.
Which is what the manager had put.
Right.
And.
Then he explained to us what was in professional membership, which is a lot more than professional membership.
My goodness.
Yes, I've got the, the seven thousand seventy-two instead of the two at six nine ninety-five.
Right.
And what other change?
And then we got equipment maintenance, it's not twenty thousand six sixty-eight, it's thirteen six sixty-eight.
What are we taking out of that one? Is it?
Who was seven thousand dollars put in tip? What was that?
Page forty-five. The equipment, um, maintenance.
I didn't know anything you wanted to take out.
Started out at. An increase of seventeen, oh, I'm sorry. It's, it was an increase of thirteen six sixty-eight instead of seventeen three forty-three.
Yeah.
Um, and then vehicle maintenance, I don't know what we do there. If we go with lease program, that's thirty-four thousand four hundred fifty dollars. An increase of eleven thousand four hundred fifty dollars that I wouldn't think we'd need that much vehicle maintenance on five new cars.
I've got a note. I do not have an amount to reduce it by, but I do have a note on that.
Yeah, so vehicle maintenance on the vehicles itself is thirty thousand. So I would. I, I don't know what to, to call it either. Like, I, I would assume that five new vehicles. You're gonna have a lot less maintenance.
What's kind of what I'm thinking.
Uh, I mean, I, I would be comfortable, think you could cut it at least by, uh, fifteen thousand and think it would be okay.
How many of the older cruises would you still have to pick up for five?
So we still have the SRO car, and I'd still need to keep the car for, for, uh, for the technical.
Maintenance costs and protectors.
Would, would be pretty low, I would think, 'cause it's got low mileage on it. That one, it has low mileage on it.
But then we could buy them three of those vehicles out, to one for the town office, one for code course, or, or one here for travel. And how's your animal control?
And one of them's over, the animal control of, of the vehicle's already over to Dennis. He's using it. As we kind of work out this new deal with animal control.
But then we could run those until we couldn't do anything with them, you know, as long as we keep them clean and serviced.
Yeah, the only one I would recommend to get rid of totally is the one Stu drives at a hundred seventy thousand. I don't know if anybody would want to take it.
But that might increase our fuel use, but it wouldn't be drastically, and it would save us, it would take away those trout, that trout.
All the, the miles from the various people here, yeah.
And we can take the mileage and convert it over to standard gallons and reduce all those line items.
Yes. That would reduce paying per mile, that would reduce a lot.
Right.
I would think that would pay for the gallons to have those vehicles able to be used.
Probably would not eliminate mileage, complete town employees, because life doesn't work out well enough that, uh, on one day. Uh, an EMT goes to a school somewhere, and on the next day, someone from the clerk's office, and then on the next day, some of the police, sometimes those double up. But it would make a big difference.
We had Wade using his own vehicle, and I think Code needs one of those vehicles, so we don't pay all that, all that mileage.
I agree.
And it's not wear and tear on that vehicle.
Right.
So.
I think that would help.
When, when would you be able to do the lease? Would it be for this fiscal year?
Yeah, so if, once the green light there for July, it would probably be September to November before I'd have them all done.
But we could.
Yeah.
Oh, any more questions? What, what would be the, uh, what kind of vehicle would you be looking at?
Just the Ford Explorer. Everything's the same.
We can't lock in for gas prices, um, because we pay. I think it's fifteen cents over rack. Um. Well, I can lock in, I have not locked in yet. Usually it's around July or August. By the time they start, we start locking in for the heating oil. Yeah, yeah.
Companies in town have what they do for us, because I know a lot of which of us are paying rack, so.
Yeah. Uh, Dyce Arts is currently where we're using.
Thank you, Chief.
All right.
All right.
I only got more questions.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you. Thanks, George. Chief Brown, how you doing? Not bad. Wish you had more people here to ask questions. Chief, on line twenty-four, uniforms?
Yes.
Does that include the turnout?
That's the turnout.
That's the turnout. And I see you were fifty-five-two, the budget committee was ninety-five-two, and, and the town manager was fifty-five-two.
Yeah, correct.
What is gonna do the turnout gear that you absolutely have to have on the date?
The absolute gear was what I had asked for.
Okay.
Like to do, like the budget committee recommended, we go two sets per person, 'cause most of them only have one set now. And that would be, so when they go to fire, go to the spills, they can wash them, and they have another set to put on. So it is needed, very much needed.
And does that replace all, we have no turnout gear that's any good at all?
Yes, we have turnout gear. They have one set.
That's good.
That's good, yes. I mean, a lot, a lot of them have stripped, ripped gear, but it's still, it's good for a second set.
We have, we have one set that's good, and if we had one set for fif- uh, fifty-five-two, we'd give everybody one set, they give them two sets. And then next year, maybe we could get another set because that older set was, right. Would that be acceptable? So that'll be a fifty-five-two. And equipment purchase, was that?
That's for the jaws of life.
That's the jaws of life. Our jaws is thirty years old.
Our jaws, one of them is thirty years old, and then when they say thirty-five.
Yeah. And the wages, that's contractual? That's the contract that they're under?
Wages are there in negotiations as of next Thursday.
Yeah, someday next week.
Yeah.
The only, didn't the fight have only go for a one or two-year contract last time?
When we did the three contracts last time, as you know, in Maine, public employee union contracts cannot be longer than three years. Police and public works, we did three years. However, since we were changing the work week regarding fire EMS. We were going from a fifty-six hour work week to a forty-two, uh, they did not ask for substantial pay raise. They simply wanted the, the change. They've gotten the change. New people approved that, and so now. But they only wanted to go for two years because they figured to come back for the money later, and now is later.
But that was, that change was supposed to save us money. Have we saved money with that change?
It was popular to say that it would reduce overtime. I never thought it would, and it hasn't.
How much have we reduced our overtime from thirty-seven nine nineteen to one eighty-five six twenty?
We haven't.
We haven't reduced our overtime?
The, uh. Let me see, it's gone from, no, it's. Eight hundred bucks. The more calls you have, and that's what's happened with the power. You know, if it's a trial, then you get more employees, you get more vacations, you get more time off.
Mm-hmm.
More sick leave.
Mm-hmm. So, right now, we're servicing Chester and Wynn?
We are servicing Chester and Wynn Fire EMS. And we are going to McCorhaw, Replantation, and Drew Plantation for ambulance.
Do we have contracts for those?
Yes, we do.
We do. How long are those contracts?
One year.
Well, you've changed the, some of the formula that we use, we have.
Done on the contracts.
Yeah.
Change, the last contract, you put out, correct?
Yes, we had been sort of all over the place. We'd set a contract, and then we set another one months later. We now, uh, are getting them turned into a uniform contract so that they all are paying based on the same idea. The only difference becomes the, one of the factors in the contract is population, and so each town has a different population.
I have a question on the uniform back to twenty-four. Now, fifty-five, two hundred for, if, given that at least two sets of gear won't be as good, right? Should that be down with the turnout gear, uh, line, or is that just for the lease itself?
I couldn't hear you, yeah.
So, no, I just, uh, just had a question on, uh, why not zero zero two four? We had fifty-five thousand two hundred would be enough to get them to some, like, second turnout gear, right?
Correct.
So, does that, you get also a turnout gear lease on zero three ten?
The, the turnout gear lease is, that's done. That's, that's all done. That was done this year.
Okay. Did we find, Chief, that it was cheaper to go buy the turnout gear than the lease?
Well, we leased it, the buy, what we did. All right, that's why we, we leased the buy.
Okay.
I'm sure.
Would you do the same?
Yeah.
I would think so, yes.
Um, the turnout gear lease turned out to be a painful process to get all of the gear at one time.
Yes.
Um, it, because they don't always have the right sizes in stock, and it took maybe eight months.
What happened last time is we was trying to replace the gear to fit the people that was in the station, but at the point in time it was higher. Well, they wasn't letting us wait. We had to buy right then, one big long time to get at least some fronts. So we bought some gear that, like, barges are extra large, so it would fit. It's all being new. It's all new. But it's a little skinny guy for them. We, he still got some of the old gear because.
Well, every male is skinny.
That's right. But that's what happened with that gear. We had to buy it and get it in that budget.
What do you have in capital, Chief?
We have a furnace for the public safety building.
That is absolutely neat.
That's absolutely neat. This one's leaking water. We got to drive through the winter with it, we locked it out.
Yeah.
And we have an ambulance. We have two ambulances now with ninety-five thousand miles on them, and it's time to keep one of those as our ambulance to transfer us and have a new one.
And I see that the ambulance lease power request is 200,000, and the management is 72,000.
I, I think the numbers that Les had put in initially was maybe to replace two, but one can succeed now, and you might even say none, but if you say none, we will be up and replacing two in another year.
Right. So we can replace one this year, and that's 72,000.
Yes, and I think I put that number in there as a lease, not of a brand-new unit.
That's what you're.
It was a lease of brand-new.
That's what.
Was. Okay, if that, if that'll do it.
On my notes saying.
If that'll do it, that's good.
Would that have to, would that require an RFP or something? We want to see bids on that for a lease or early?
Sure. Yeah.
So if we were at 72, we could put an RFP out and make them in less than that.
Or more, as the case may be.
But we've already looked at one that we have some history, that 72 would do it.
We seem to think that, yes.
The company we got those poles from, we got three poles, four poles. The company that gave us that pole were the same people, but in the library. And the library is very happy with one that they have, and. Yes. Our hoses need to be replaced every, every fire you have, you really need to replace the hose. And we're, we're getting down on holes. We need holes, you know? We can buy what we have, but we should be replacing a little bit this year. Oh, every year in the test, we lose six or seven, and plus ones that's fired, so they're destroyed.
Yeah.
Oh. They probably have, uh, 4,000 feet probably. Steel cuplets.
I thought it to spread it over a few years. Don't buy it all at once.
We can buy with whatever, whatever is given. The what? No, no, that's, everything's a hundred, 50-foot length is a hundred foot. So 1,000 feet would be 10, 100-foot lengths, a 20, 50-foot.
And what, what were we doing?
You got, you got inch and three-quarter, two and a half, four inches, and six inches.
These two sizes are the only ones you have?
No, we have all of them, but these are the ones that are new.
Oh, okay, so Rick, since you can buy the one and three-quarter inch or six inch, can the next year buy the?
Grants, please.
We are doing grants. In fact, we have grants that right now is, we've had EMS grants this year that we have, so 75,000, $80,000, the command is doing, that is paid for a paramedic go to paramedic school, and then advanced people go to advanced school and basics. And now we've got some events that are going on to paramedic school this year in Prescott, which a grant's been paid for. And that's why I really parked up when you was talking about saving a police cruiser, because some of the money, my grant money, I'm trying to earn gas mileage.
Chief, is there anything coming down the line for firemen like they have for police officers? Where we put all this money into ENTs and all this money into firemen, and then they walk out the door, and we're left holding the bag?
There's talk of it, but nothing is done yet. But we really have not had a lot of people walk out the door.
No, but.
Yeah, but it could happen.
You can see what would have happened in police work with, with the last ones, with everybody, all of a sudden, we're having a bidding war on who's paying what for pay, and for 50 cents, they're walking out the door. But if the other police wants to pay 30,000.
The town manager put together a contract, they're signing, and they go away to school.
Yeah.
That.
Give us five years.
Give us five years.
Like you have to at the hospital, you know, like you have to, and.
But I think it's three years, but it's kind of difficult to get it out.
Well, is that, is that enforceable now?
Well, that's.
You're talking about labor issues, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. It would have, basically, you'd have to have, like, the vain chiefs.
Yeah.
You have the fire, you have the vain fighter chiefs, right?
Yeah, they fight.
Is there anything that's being discussed about?
They, they discuss it all the time, but it hasn't got the legislation.
But no, all the money, we haven't had that problem yet, but we start having a bidding war, I mean.
And we have been very good with all this training that we've been doing, because Lincoln people, there were no education at all. And they're, they're loving it, and they're, we're training them from firefighter to basic EMT, they get up through, and they, yeah, they got homes here. They had a study. We have a few qualified, like, four in the last six months. But there's so much training, people not getting stuff. And they go to the schools now, they're not going to take their patients.
Kind of like reserve officers for the PD. For the fire station, you had a $50,000 equipment purchase line, 0031?
Yes, I was to do maintenance to the building, above and beyond, above and beyond the, uh, the furnace. Which we've been doing every year. Like us, this year, right now, we're in the middle of doing the floor and taking some cabinets. Now, next year, we'd talk like last year, putting a covering on the floor in the Bay Area, I mean, in the walls in the Bay Area, like the cowwashers have. To do that, to make it more modern, some different lights.
So again, I'll say the rent here, and the rent at the police department, and $50,000 at the fire department. What can we get for a bond where we could have a fire department, police department, town office, rec center in the same place? That's kind of.
Your question, I think, is what does the annual payment on that become?
Right.
What would you find out?
I mean, we're up. Getting right up close to 100,000 dollars a year, where we're renting and fixing, and, you know, now we got a, we'll have a new gas furnace, but still, facility, if we could have something that we own after so many years, and we're not paying rent, because we wouldn't be raising our own rent $4,000, $2,500.
Les has done a very good job in the last few years effectively salvaging that building, which was in pretty rough shape, and it's not new by any stretch, but he's done a good job saying.
No, we've gone up in the roof. We have gone up, the budget committee brought that up. There's been, we've gone up to the roof, took pitches, it's not. It's just the way it's made.
It's okay.
It's the way it's made. The, uh, the roof, they, something I figured, 15, 16 years ago, the new roof was put on it. And maybe the craftsman job of spinning the roof, that was the best, we've lost some shingles, but we have repaired them. So the shingles are in pretty good shape, and the roof is in good shape.
Okay, okay.
Anything else so far?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, I got one more question.
I ain't no deal with cats.
I ain't no deal with cats. We'll text you. Yeah, we'll text it to you.
Text us back.
Utilities. My, my basic question there is water and sewer going up $53,000.
Last year, um, when we were doing the budget, I was not aware that the hydrant fees and the water fees were increasing at that time. The hydrant fees were much lower in last year's budget, but we ended up paying $273,040 for them. So that is current hydrant fees right there, and the water increase was small. But the large increase there is those hydrant fees that we have no control over.
The 53,000?
About $53,000 different, yes.
That's hydrant fees?
Yes.
And that's set by the water company?
PUC.
Set by the Public Utilities Commission.
And we've, we've lowered our heating fuel because of the natural gas that we're putting in?
At the library, and we could lower it a bit more if we knew that we were putting the natural gas furnace in at the fire station.
I thought we was.
Yeah, so I can take, it seems that we're using the same number of units for the other two buildings that we switched over to natural gas. It's just a cheaper unit when we do it. So I could take my multiplier and reduce that by $2 a gallon on the public safety building or the fire station.
We can do that. Anything on utilities, Marshall? Public works? Dennis, the increase in wages, that's contract with the unions?
That is.
The public works equipment, it's up 40,260. That is for the purchase of a backup. Right now, we're one man trouble. We had defections, and we had a man trouble. You're all set? Marshall, anything on public works? Dennis, we were talking about earlier, buying a deal for a tailgate that would, that would do something. Okay, is that still in this bu- budget?
It, it should be in the capital.
In the capital?
My proposal was to trade the street sweeper as part of the payment for that. They offered 6,500 of the street sweeper. That's about half of the tablet spread.
Is that something we absolutely need this year?
I can't say that we absolutely need it. It will make our job easier, and it will save a considerable amount of time. As you know, we've been, a lot of rain the last few years, and I've sent the guys out to do a considerable, considerable, not shoulder repairs. This particular apparatus will, will make those repairs more rapid.
What is that under in, in capital approval?
Tailgate conveyor?
Yes, that's it. We discussed some of these things at one of our council meetings. So the 310 SL backhoe, is that actually $170,000?
No, that's 140,000 is a budget number. And it'll probably come in a few dollars less than that.
But 33% of that is paid out of the transfer station?
I'm proposing that 33% of it gets paid out of the transfer station, but the price of it is 140,000.
Okay.
But we've not done that in the past. I'm proposing it now because the transfer station gets about 50% of life in years of that piece of equipment.
So that wouldn't be 140,000 in your budget if you're going to take some out of the transfer budget?
I would agree with that.
How much are you taking out of the transfer budget?
Well, 33% of that number would be, um, 40,000, about, uh, about 40,000.
So we could drop that down to 100,000, and then 40,000 would be in the transfer station.
We've not done it in that fashion before.
Well, if the transfer station's going to use it, it kind of makes sense that the transfer station budget paid for part of it.
I agree.
And what's the 30,000 or the one-ton dump truck home with the capital?
My proposal for that is we have two single-axle dump trucks that are ready to be cycled out of the fleet and use them as partial payment on a one-ton dump truck to add to the fleet. and use them as partial payment on a one-ton dump truck to add to the fleet, in which case we would need to raise about thirty thousand.
Do we know that's a deal that they'll give us?
Um, I talked to the salesman, they'd be willing to put together some, some sort of deal, such as that.
Wouldn't we have to go up to bid on that?
We would. I would like to add though, if, if we decide to go in that direction, then we would need the calcium trailer because one of the trucks that we'll be liquidating is our calcium trucks.
Is the calcium truck ready for the mon yacht or will it do it some other year?
It would do it some other year.
You're probably not gonna get much on the trade on the calcium truck, are we?
Probably not.
We'd have to have a, another eighteen thousand dollar calcium trailer.
Well, we, we need to do one, one or the other of these proposals. I included them both in there so we could discuss doing one or the other.
What's gonna be the more efficient way to save money? Is it gonna be?
I think the calcium trailer would be a best way to go because that would be a brand-new apparatus, would last us a long time. One-ton dump truck would be would be a used item, but we would be able to liquidate two of our existing dump trucks now in which to acquire the one-ton dump, which would be useful to us in the field.
Oh, used, oh, used.
We wouldn't get a clunker, but it wouldn't be a brand-new one. The, the one we actually looked at was a two thousand twenty-two model. Thirty-four thousand model.
So we're looking at spending, if we trade the two trucks, we're looking at spending forty-eight thousand dollars. Correct?
That is correct.
If we kept the calcium truck, we're gonna end up buying a calcium truck next year? Or is that gonna last us?
We, we would need to replace it in the near future. I can't say I guarantee it the last two years or three years, but it's towards the end of its life.
I thought we lowered the backhoe to a hundred thousand.
No, it should be a third, two-thirds of that would be ninety-four thousand or more, more, um, that line.
So the transfer station would be paying forty-six thousand.
That's correct, and the transfer station bu- budget right now does not reflect that. This isn't, no, this isn't an idea that this is the first year that we would be doing it this way, and so there is some variable in the paperwork.
John?
Yes?
If I were to make that change with the backhoe on the public works department equipment, I would also include the backhoe under transfer station and capital as well, not in the regular transfer station budget. He has a line item on page ninety-seven that that would go into. So the capital budget would stay the same, it would just be split in the two departments.
So it's gonna be ninety-four thousand on the, on the public works and forty-six thousand on transfer station?
Okay, correct.
But regardless of where it comes out of, we're still looking at a hundred and forty thousand taxpaying dollars. And is that something we absolutely gotta have this year?
Councilman Trez, you're a regular visitor at the transfer station. Go take a look at it.
Are we, are we washing and, and maintaining these things and, and taking care of them? Painting the wheels and stuff like that, can we?
That, uh, the backhoe that's at the transfer station now was there when I went.
Good.
Um, you can tell obviously it's seen better days and it's salt corrosion that is causing the issues. Backhoe is at the public works, it's much better taken care of.
I mean, you have all the tools.
It's a hand-me-down, that's a hand-me-down from public works.
But you have all the tools to take care of the cleaning and taking, you don't have anything like that any, if I assume you have the tools?
Nope, we have that.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you, Dennis. We go to transfer station next?
Yeah.
Good luck.
I did want to go at Mr. Manager on the capital for the police department.
Yes.
That is I expect that PD Cruiser Reserve is gonna be the least for those five Cruisers.
Okay.
Should we just add a forty-six thousand dollars to this? Correct?
In the capital.
In the capital.
Okay.
Not in the operating.
Okay. And I know you explained it Dennis, but the, the perk tipping fees, were they making us all to the other place and it's costing us all, it's still costing us all these tires every time we go?
The tires, as of late, not been so bad, but this year we've used it a lot more tires than typically in the past.
Because they're going into that landfill?
Because they're going into the landfill.
Yeah.
And a- all the haulers going in there are reporting the same.
Yeah.
Talked to Danny Ireland, he fusses about losing an inordinate amount of tires.
Yeah. And when do they think that perk might ever come back up and? Anybody?
They'll tell us anybody's guess. Um, you know, a year ago, it was a year. And now Rick and I happen to put the next week to go visit them to see what they're saying.
Yeah.
Now, I did notice they were on the front page of the paper last week.
Both of the facilities, one in Hampden and the one in Orangeville, have for more than a year reported that in a matter of months, it'll be open. Hasn't happened to be the case.
No. But our tipping fees are up almost ten thousand dollars. And the building and grounds maintenance went from a thousand to the manager's requesting sixty-four hundred, seventy-four hundred?
Melissa, what's, how are you doing here?
Um, uh, first page in the transfer station.
Good.
Zero, zero, five, zero, building grounds maintenance.
I have to answer to that one. He had five thousand in capital for general maintenance of the transfer station building. That doesn't qualify as a capital item. Um, ten thousand, five-year is capital, so it has been moved from the capital to the actual transfer station budget under building maintenance.
Building maintenance for this year, um, it does say under the narrative down here, um, we're gonna need some additional signage and also, uh, the overhead doors, both are need of repair, and two of our storage trailers have suffered failing floors, the floors are wood in those storage trailers. Both of those are gonna need to be replaced, and then typical auto repairs happen throughout the year.
Some public works, that's right.
We use very little overtime at the transfer station, mainly for the driver, and he has to leave early. If he gets two loads in a day, he has to leave earlier than, than the normal strike. We have one regularly, and then if anybody else needs to, they pay a fee, but very rarely does that happen.
How, how much does that cost us, Dennis, to open that to that one person?
Fifty dollars. We charge fifty dollars to contractor gate open.
But we only have one contractor?
One regular contractor. Occasionally, one of the other local contractors will call me and ask me, can they get the dump? It's fifty dollars. Sometimes it's worth it to them.
Landfill?
Landfill's me too.
I don't have any questions. Thank you, Dennis. Social services? The increase of thirty-five hundred dollars?
The food cupboard has come to us and asked if we could, I think they wanted five thousand. It's been harder and harder for them to, um, fund with what we've been giving them, so they have asked that I present the council with a request for five thousand dollars for them this year, and that is the increase in this budget. And actually, I can decrease that same line item by one thousand nine hundred and forty dollars because I have the current contract for the domain society, which is only five thousand and sixty dollars.
So we can lower that thirty-five hundred to?
Line item one O two. We can lower the
Social services?
Yes, the social services by, it would end up being ten thousand sixty dollars if we kept the full funding for the food cupboard that they've requested.
How much of, and that's a, that's Lincoln's food cupboard?
Yes, that's the Lincoln food cupboard.
That we take care of Lincoln citizens?
Yes, and they also, um, they do ask them for proof of income at the Lincoln one. They don't just give to anybody who comes. They are diligent about checking that the people really are eligible to use of this cupboard.
And, and this is Lincoln citizens?
This is Lincoln.
Not Toronto and Dallas.
Far as I know, that's what they're doing, Miss Lincoln, because Burlington has their own, because Burlington has requested in the past money from Lincoln for theirs, claiming Lincoln citizens were going up there. I'm asking for the full amount and in the revenues is seventy percent back. Seventy percent currently. It was fifty for a few years. It's back up to seventy. I don't know what the current.
Legislature is actively kicking this around and it runs all the way from pay the towns nothing to pay them a hundred percent.
Or to take it out.
And many, many numbers in between.
Currently it's seventy, and that's what this budget's based on. They could change it mid-way on us, but currently it's seventy percent reimbursement. And we have no idea what we're gonna get come through the door from one day to the next, unfortunately.
But that, that, what was that seventeen? I'm sorry.
That lowers the line item, that's twelve thousand. Uh, I'm sorry, from twelve thousand.
To ten thousand sixty.
Correct.
Yes.
Just as a note, there's no proposal in here to give money to any of the entities who are asking. We have about a dozen. It includes Life Flight helicopter, includes, includes cab, that includes Salvation Army, it includes, there are a dozen of them. Uh, and they ask annually and we do not typically donate. There are municipalities in Maine who do donate quite a bit, and there are municipalities in Maine who donate nothing to them.
Then on social services? Yeah. Cemetery, fox recreation. Well, how much of this budget you put together?
None of it. I haven't looked at it, so I'm, I'm on, I should be able to answer any questions. He said he doesn't expect.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Yes, fourteen sixty-five. Uh, yeah, fourteen sixty-five is what it went to on January first, up from fourteen fifty.
One mileage reimbursement.
Yes. Well, yes, uh, you'll have year-round use. Some of them too.
This mileage is for track meet. Right, that's not, that's.
Yeah, that'd be for like the trainings and stuff that, like our lifeguards have to go to, um, track and field meets, things like that. I mean, I, I just depend on some of the stuff that people are getting reimbursed for would be high school kids, so I'm not sure exactly what the policy would be on that. Um. But for me, yes, I can do.
Yeah, the council votes on this.
Those would be down to Prince Thomas Park. It wouldn't be on this current budget. I believe Ron is currently working at the park for this year. But one of my goals is to look around and see what else for things like that. For future.
Have we blamed any playground equipment this year?
Not to my knowledge. I would have to take a look.
Under rec truck zero six ten, I don't see any manager requests. But it was FY twenty-five was five thousand, twenty-six is ten thousand.
It's been this capital. It is a reserve to purchase a new truck. They snuck it into me last year under rec. And when I saw the ten thousand this year, realized that they are putting money aside for a truck. So I have moved it to the capital.
It looks like in capital and cemetery box recreation, we're doing twenty thousand dollars for wolf's.
Nope, part of that is, it says rec equipment, part of that is the ten thousand for the trucks.
I'm looking at zero five zero, zero zero five zero in cemetery box and recreation capital. Fifteen thousand last year, it's twenty thousand this year. Forget it, I'm in the tip.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry.
So it's on page. Yeah, ninety-eight in the capital. He had the truck in two different places as well. He had ten thousand in his regular budget and he had fifteen thousand here. That was not random.
So it looks like in capital, we're asking for twenty thousand dollars for rec equipment. What is?
So I would have to look into the trucks. Ron said they are near, getting near the end. I would have to do a little more research on that as to when. But the mowers, they were on a program of rotating the oldest one out every six to eight years. And it looks like we are on that rotation for this year of twenty twenty-five of replacing that. That is something that I would be doing shortly. Be have to, be able to bid. I also was just gonna check in with Lou and also check just kind of the maintenance on the two oldest ones to see if that is still a good process. I like it, but I also want to check with the people that are actually using them every, you know, every day during the summer done.
My view of the two box recreation pickup trucks, the newer one has yet more life. The older one has virtually no future.
We're gonna have all those accounts when it comes right down to the next meeting, we'll have all accounts from us, showing what's there.
We hope so. You, your library.
Hi there.
Hi.
Well, I see we increased our full-time wages, but we dropped our part-time wages more than we increased our full-time wages.
Correct.
Which is a good thing.
Yes, having a full-time employee versus a couple of part-time means that we have more of an investment. And she's the clerk downstairs who is the children's librarian in training and is doing fabulously. So we're excited about her commitment and that she's with us. What that does is it puts us very occasionally to need a per diem because there's always those times where if you don't have a couple of part-time people and we're running on full-time this way. There's been a few days where we can afford to have one of us out, but two of us out tends to be a little bit challenging. So, but they're rare occasions and we just say to the people, lovely people who work with us around the town, okay, this is gonna be my per diem for today and it's been working out good. I was just gonna say. He's, yeah, he actually was somebody who was interested in the library anyway. And so I saw him being an asset to the town.
We're looking at twenty thousand dollars for new books?
Yes, so inventory and books have gone up twenty-five percent. So when I looked at three percent as being something that was manageable and reasonable, it's something that we can definitely do. So that's where that is and it's, it's books, but it's all the things that go on a book, stickers, covers, things to get them on the shelves.
So that is part of that. We can take out of accounts that we have for the library. And we can have that for the next time to see.
Yeah, at UBS.
Yeah.
I don't believe we took any out of that account last year because it was in, at such a low amount. So next week when I bring you those figures, you can see what we have in there currently.
Yep, and we have fines and fees, other things that, that are, those things are not predictable. But we did fairly well this past year. So we know that book sales and donations and things that we can't really count on, but have been.
And in the capital line, twenty thousand dollars from the library building?
Yes, we have big ticket items coming up in our future. And that has to do with door replacements, windows, the painting is going out to bid. In two years, we'll be looking at a sprinkler system, maybe this fiscal, but next. So we're just gonna have to climb a little bit in the capital moving forward because of the nature of our building and that we're, we're having growing pains. So someday in addition would be appropriate. But, you know, that's the third and fourth and fifth year, not now. But now what's happening is is that we have gone over in our, you know, when it looks like building maintenance just keeps climbing. And so it's reasonable to have this in our capital so that way it's not in our operating budget when something goes afloat because we just had the lift finance process, some unforeseen budgeting issues. And so didn't our toilets. So those are expensive fixes that are not necessarily in our budget. So.
We'll have to have it. Had two or three sprinklers.
Yeah, it was when we had our inspection that this was suggested. And so that's when Sprossen said, yeah, let's put this in the capital plan and so it's there.
There would be a reduction in insurance if we had a sprinkler system, yes, would be enough to pay for it.
No, no, for the sprinkler system? No, we have not because this was a recent mention. Yeah, yeah. We were still considering, you know, rugs, painting, windows and doors. So, you know, lifted toilets and then, yeah, because there are a few things that the library does need for library business. But it seems that we just keep writing. Because our system is a school system and not a library system, so someday. And, you know, we did replace some scanners this year, so thank you, we did upgrade a little bit. But again, it's just, the full at Destiny is the school system that we work with and, yeah, those scanners were very helpful. We didn't realize that you can't just go buy a scanner, you have to buy a scanner that, you know, is compatible with your system.
Rick, what's the name of that company that evaluates and installs sprinkler system? I don't know if the public safety building use them.
There are multiple of them in this area. Eastern Sprinklers is one. There's no American something, but they're around this area.
And we have a little bit of time because they've just come.
A little bit of time unless it's a disaster.
Well, I have a few questions because a sprinkler system like going off where books are there too. You know, we're also assessing for our insurance, how much our collection is actually worth, which is a lot.
So the twenty thousand dollars for library building, that includes two doors?
Oh, well, we prioritized as an advisory committee, we went and prioritized some of our needs. And, yeah, so there's three doors that need to be replaced and they're very expensive ones. So we have a quote out where we're expecting a quote to come in from Portland Glass as to what, how much that actually is going to be. And that includes a window, an old paint, huge window. So Portland Glass will give us those quotes and then right now we're out to bid for painting. So, and that, and we wanted to get the painting done before we did anything about the rug. So that's, that's pretty much what we're looking at right now.
So we need to do three doors painting and rugs all in the same year?
I don't think that twenty thousand will go that far, but it's going as far as we can, right? So when those bids come in and when those quotes come in, then we get to decide. There are priorities and one of the priorities is the front door and the backside door. We play synchronized door slamming to be able to secure the building. So we know that these need to be replaced. Yeah, we put on a handle so that way we can keep closing it. That the heaves bother the doors in the winter. So we definitely have to do something. Public Works and Dennis is gonna help us for a little bit less. But, yeah, so it's, it's smart to put things in capital plan if, in fact, we want to stay on top of what we need to do. And not have it always be in the library operations because our little budget can get challenged quickly.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you.
Melissa, we were supposed to have a big savings and health insurance. And to increase to two hundred and twelve thousand, we've got to go up to bid.
Yes, and I have already requested information from Maine Municipal to see what our current status is of how many employees we have on its plan.
Excuse me? Thank you.
I've already made the request to the Maine Municipal. Based on what we currently have, we have the lowest cost plan that they have. But we're paying way more than we ever anticipated in the meta vision reimbursement. So I have requested from them to send me a quote on how much it would cost to step up a plan and have a lower deductible. We're, it's not, it's not gonna save us any money to step up the plan with them. So what we'll have to do is we'll have to go out the bid like we did about five years ago and see if there's any other company that's willing to give us a good quote for the same type of insurance we have.
We don't want to lose quality, but two hundred and twelve thousand dollars is too much.
A lot of it is because when we have an employee change, the first employee that left us may have been taking the single coverage and then we get a new employee that's taking the family coverage. And so the town takes a hit and the employee takes a hit. And then if you have two or three people on each employee's plan and they're all getting major medical things throughout the year, I think I've put over eighty thousand dollars this current year into the meta vision for the reimbursements. It is super painful every time I have to do a check request for that. It just, it has gotten, the first few years were really good. And then ever since then, it has just taken a hit on the meta vision.
Before we, before we stay with a two hundred and eleven thousand dollar increase, I think we need to go up to bid.
It's gonna take several months to get the bid. It will be after this budget hits before we can safely say what we're gonna go with. Last time we did have a local agent. That I had to really do the numbers to see where, if we were gonna, the health trust was gonna be cheaper or the local agent. Because the health trust offers three levels of plans, they offer single, they offer single parent, and they offer family. And a family is whether it's just a husband and wife, or a husband and wife and multiple children, it's all the same cost. And the difference is a lot of the local ones will do four plans, single, single parent, two adults, a couple, and then a family. But it still didn't, their other plans were more expensive, so it did not offset the savings with the health trust when we did it last time. I don't know if it'll work the other way this time or not.
I think we want to send letters out from all.
Yeah, and I can just, I'll pull up my old one that I had, I'll just have to update numbers and on what we're looking for.
Airport?
How you doing tonight?
Good, sir.
So right now we're charging a extra dollar a gallon over that.
Yeah, I try to keep that.
Yeah. And a hundred dollars a year for a hangman?
Yeah, that, the, yes, that's lease payment to the town for the lot, now that the town owns the lot.
Right, so we own that, oh, right.
Yes, okay, yes.
And you think that's enough?
Well, we, we, we are researching leases with an escalation clause.
Okay.
Some of the people that have been there long term, we may not be able to do that because of the initial agreement for purchasing the land from the organization.
Okay.
They were given twenty-five year leases.
Okay, and so they have a hundred dollars a.
For, there's twenty-four lots, yeah. What we are researching and proposing is that, that if somebody new comes in, we would have similar leases, but escalation clauses. And I just had a meeting last week with main aviation, and they're gonna provide some guidance, main D O T.
But the FAA said we needed to own that land.
Yes.
So that's why we had to win the.
Yes. We're in violation of the grant assurances by having private access to a public runway.
Do we have private fuel tanks on our property?
There, there may be, there may be.
What's our liability there as far as?
You can have aviation fuel, there's, there's a certain amount, a number of gallons that can be stored.
With the launch of somebody else that's on our property?
Yes.
So are we making anything else of fuel over there at all?
Well, the way it's been set up, Melissa can correct me if I'm wrong, but we try, we try to keep the price per gallon a dollar above delivery as best we can, and it does fluctuate daily regularly.
What other airports doing in the area?
Yeah, we, I, I try to keep that a little bit underneath what some of the other ones are, just to increase the amount of traffic. So that our fuel is desirable. And so that the, the thought process is, is that if we completely sell, we get about eight thousand, eighty-five hundred gallons a year. That when the next fuel load comes, there's the funds there that completely cover the cost of it.
And we've been doing that all right?
Yes. That the, that's in the area now is a non-functioning L P gas forced fire furnace. The, it's quite old, it is presently not working. I've had one technician tell me that we may be able to service it. Now, we were looking to put in heat pumps, that's what my request was, for a couple of heat pumps. That building is maybe six hundred square feet, it's a small town.
So, tell me, will, the budget committee says take out the renovation for the pilot's lounge? And took out the heating fuel cost since the furnace is not functional?
We could, I kind of need the heating fuel back in there, because we have, we have a L P gas hot water heater.
Yeah.
And that's, we haven't been using the furnace, because we're concerned about the safety of the unit.
So.
But we do use the hot water about five months a year, perhaps six at the best.
Okay.
And I think the consensus or the discussion that I had when we met with them was that perhaps we're throwing money at a project that it's not very well positioned on the airport for year-round use. Discussion kind of turned toward maybe we gotta look at either constructing a small building or, or buying a, one of those small cabins, like an AMAS cabin. But I've been submitting every year for FAA terminal grant. And we haven't had any luck yet, but eventually we should. And they're building all around us, eventually our airport is gonna qualify. And then we're talking, you know, a million, million dollar building, so, but on a grant. And I, I think as long as I have fuel to operate it the way we have been, we did do some renovations. The building has a better use, I've been on fine with what they're, what that conversation turned into.
Can you have a motor brain line off, is that not covered under our motor brain?
Do you have one, it's not at the pilot's lounge, correct, or is it?
Yeah.
Okay, because we have a.
We have a lineup, line of sight to a receiver from one of the towers. It's for the FAA weather cameras and, and for like weather.
With the amount that we're paying motor brain, why wouldn't that be covered in the motor brain contract?
Because it's a separate service, that is an internet service through, it's not, it's technically motor brain, but it's, we connect. It is a, an internet service for that, we have a separate one for the digital sign out by the highway and the transfer station, all three of them have a separate service, because it's too far out to connect back to motor brain using what we use here, which is a, they call it dark fiber.
But nonetheless, it's still all going to motor brain?
Correct.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, so that's another eighteen hundred dollars for the year.
The four hundred dollar increase for the airport liabilities, that's the insurance?
Yeah, it went from, went from seventeen hundred to just under twenty-one now. And that would, that would catch us up with last year's increases.
In, in capital, you have the airport development. One page.
Ninety-nine.
Oh, nine hundred capital.
Yes.
What is that, three hundred and sixty-three thousand?
That's the master plan for the airport, the last time that was done was two thousand. And we're overdue for a completely new master plan. And based on the, the, some of the land acquisitions and the changes, it's a good time to do it. And it's, it's an FAA grant, they fund ninety percent, the state funds five percent. And it's over, it'll take a few years to do it, some people say is up, I don't know, as many as four years to complete it. But that was the cost estimate.
But we'd, we paid five percent.
Yes.
So when our budget, we have to have the whole juke match?
Yes, because we have to have a line to spend it from, and the revenues is the ninety-five percent coming back to us from the FAA and the state main DOT.
How long those master plans good for, how often do they have to get bid?
Well, this one is twenty-five years old, there was one five year, there was one update somewhere in that period of time where they just cleaned up some of the changes, but, you know, I, I would have to ask a few questions to find out how long they last. But I, I know we're overdue. I did, I did inquire of the main DOT, the aviation chief, because I was truthfully startled by the cost. And that's pretty much a golden rate. There's several airports in Maine this year that are doing the same thing that we're looking to do.
So in that line though, when you subtract the revenue, we're, we're looking, the town's gonna be on the hook for eighteen thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars?
The five percent of that, yes.
Is the pilot's association gonna pay any of that?
No.
No. So, the people that use it, aren't gonna pay for it?
No, they're gonna participate in the product, in the development of it.
Okay.
There's the airport committee and, you know, probably council members also will be asked to participate.
But I mean.
The development of it.
But they won't be putting any money towards it?
No.
But that looks like a big number, but we're, we have to pay eighteen thousand, go ahead.
That's two items on that line item. The airport master plan is actually three hundred and forty-eight thousand, which we will be paying seventeen thousand, four hundred of that. The other part of that is this beacon that needs to be replaced.
Say who again?
Look at page ninety-nine.
Looking at it.
And he's got two items on that line item. He's got airport beacon system for fifteen thousand. And then the airport master plan is three forty-eight, three forty-eight is the grant.
Okay.
Which means the town is responsible for seventeen thousand, four hundred of that portion.
Okay.
And the.
How much is the beacon?
Fifteen thousand, which is all on us, he does not have a grant for that.
You think we do have a grant for that?
We do not.
Is that beacon a safety thing?
Well, it's, it's one of the grant assurances you have to maintain it. The one we have now uses outdated incandescent bulbs that blow on a regular basis. And it costs the town six hundred dollars every time for a light bulb to be changed.
How many times did they blow last year?
We've got one out right now, and I've replaced, I expended the budget last year, or I mean this year, trying to keep it going.
So it took all your budget money last year replacing bulbs in there?
Yeah, yes, I was, I budgeted twelve hundred for thinking that two climbs would be enough. And then one of the bulbs went out.
So we're eighteen hundred right now?
If, if we, if I send somebody, we're operating it, we're operating it without it being fully functional.
Okay.
The new system will be LED, the, that will, instead of having to change walls several times a year, it'll have thousands of hours of use. And reportedly, all the information I've read is that the utility cost to operate it drops way off because it's LED operated. And, you know, we could, once it's installed, we will probably be all set for, you know, years instead of this part.
So you being the manager over there, you know this, I had no idea, PK floats built that, built a big building over. And did they ever hire twelve employees, we had a big, big thing here, Susan Collins here, you know, they hired?
They have quite a crew there.
Did they hire the twelve employees?
I don't know the exact number, they have quite a few there. And they're, Pat tells me he's eighteen months behind on orders. He basically sold manufactured floats eighteen months into the future. They also broker aircraft, which is something that I wasn't aware of. And in one of the last twelve months, they sold fifty aircraft in that year, anywhere from the cheapest perhaps in the twenty thousand range and the most expensive in the two million dollar. So they generate a lot of business.
But are we seeing anything coming to the town from all that business? And the value of that business?
Although we do collect the property tax now.
Property tax. And now, they, they do pay through the fence fee every year to have access to the runway. That was another issue that we were trying to resolve with the FAA. So now we're down to only two commercial and one pilot through the fence.
I don't understand what through the fence is.
Well, it's private access to a public runway. It has to be, it has to be an FAA approved agreement, and it has to provide a level, you know, a level of revenue for the airport.
And do they, they pay that revenue to the airport?
Yes.
How much is that a year?
They pay, each business pays five hundred dollars for access to the runway.
Is that the golden rate for that?
There really aren't that many in places in Maine where they even allow it.
Private access to a public runway.
Right, that's why we had to buy the layover property, just because all of those hangers were basically utilizing the airport privately.
So now the lands are sold.
Yes.
And they pay a lease?
Yes. And, and we are in the process of trying to develop that other piece of property that we purchased on the FAA grant. And we have five or six interested parties that are talking about building hangers on that. So they'll, they'll work with, with Booth and with code enforcement on getting the permits to build. And then they would be, that would be tax revenue to the town for building itself. And then they will pay a lease amount per square foot of land that they use, so.
Do you think we should hold off on renovating that pilot's lounge until we look to see if we wanna do a different, maybe a cost analysis? Or what it would cost to put it where you want it instead of where it is?
Well, that, that, that does make sense, I, I don't disagree with that.
Yeah, so we hold off on that ten thousand dollar renovation until we could get something to say, this is what a building would cost. And this is what, because we're not guaranteed the next five years. what a building would cost. And this is what, because we're not guaranteed the next five years, they're gonna give us that grant. But if that thing's positioned and it's not user-friendly to you or to the pilots, then we, we probably should look at that. Maybe the pilots association would think that was a good thing they could get.
And, uh, we have an, uh, an approved, they call it an airport layout plan. The airport layout plan is something that we've developed with main DOT and the FAA on what it's gonna look like. That's gonna be part of the master plan. We, we're anticipating at some point having a terminal building, um, close to the runway or up next to the runway near the, where the fuel tank farm is. And that, that's what the grant has been, that we've submitted.
I'd like to get a tour of it someday. I'd like to, I'd like to see. I haven't, never been inside the gate.
Yeah. Uh, we don't have gates. So that's.
That's why I haven't been inside it still.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. That's, that's another, uh, that, we're.
No wonder. I was looking for the nav gate.
Yeah. Well, that's another safety issue. But we have a, we have a capital improvement plan. It has to be five years. I just met last week. We, we have a meeting coming up in, I believe, August with the FAA. We've, and that's all based on FAA entitlement money and, and FAA grants that are available. And working with a consultant, Foyle Tanner, we moved a few things around to better prioritize some of the changes and, you know, getting, getting, kind of, it's like a pre-approval plan for grants coming up.
Anything else on the airport? Do we wanna hold off on that renovation until we?
I'm, I'm fine with that.
If you, if you think, if you think it's okay, I mean, we, if we got that grant next year, we could have a building where you want it, being the airport manager, and it was acceptable, then we just threw $10,000 or something we didn't need to.
Well, that was the position of the budget committee. And I, and I understand it. And, and I've talked with a couple of the, a couple of the people that frequent the airport, I think supporters, and, and they, they understand too, and that, that makes sense. So, um, you know, I, I would not disagree with that. But I would have liked the fuel money back in so we can keep hot water and the, the fuel money back in for that propane.
Yep.
And I'll change the rate on that because you had $4.10 a gallon for propane. Like $3.
Okay. So we saved a little money there.
So we can make those changes.
But just let me know when you want out, you know.
Cool.
We can do it at a thousand.
I'm, I'm on work for a little bit.
Oh, yeah? All right.
Yeah. I'll be able to, when you get them in, then I'll call you.
Oh, give me a holler. I'm in next week. So.
I will. Thank you.
Be glad to show you.
Yeah. Thank you. Also?
Yep.
That's service. How much we can cut there?
He's really changing. Although, if you look at that, in two years, we're gonna have two of those come right off of there.
Is that the public works garage?
And the, and the fire department, the breathing apparatus.
F C B A leadership. Got everybody in capital. Except for, we had a place Rick and I were talking earlier. I forget everything in capital. This was a tip. First thing we were looking at was, uh, when Rick and I were talking earlier, on webpage G I S Trio and Internet on 0032, under Communications Director, 6382762. We thought that was probably a wrong number.
Melissa and I have looked at that and we believe it's the wrong number.
I'm trying to figure out what's inside it.
That's only one. Under Communication Director and Assistant.
Oh, yes. That looks like a formula error there. That increase-decrease amount on the very first page.
Oh, that, that definitely isn't, that's definitely a formula error.
It ought to be only 8,139 for, instead of 71,99662. Right?
Yeah.
Thank goodness.
There is not that much of an increase.
No, there isn't. It went from 17,25238 to 19,33972.
8,139. Very good.
Keep in mind with this TIP budget, this is an estimated budget. But once the mill rate is set, I multiply that mill rate by the value of the TIP areas and that becomes the budget. So if the mill rate comes out with less than I've, I've estimated as the value, which is the total budget that you have here, which.
What do you think the mill rate's gonna be?
I don't know. Which is 1,489,650. If it's less than that, then I go through and cut. So it fits that budget because it is an actual, based upon the value of those TIP projects times the mill rate. And the first areas I can tell you that I will look at is events, because the last thing I will cut will be the economic development.
Yeah.
So a lot of the things, wish lists that I got from department managers, like, you know, the aluminum docks and things like that, they will be determined as the first to go.
Well, do we actually need them this year with what, with what main revenue is going to us? Do we actually need things that we, oh geez, I'd like to have, instead of I need, I have to have?
That's, that's what I do, John.
Like tobacco.
Yeah.
You know, like Dennis said, tobacco's gonna die probably tomorrow. So we understand that.
The only way these will be funded is if that budget comes out. Last year it came out $200,000 less. So I cut those items out. And I left economic development tech. Because this is not like the, it's not like the municipal budget where we devise it, you vote on it, and then I figure out the mill rate that will fund that. This is definitely a finite budget.
Mm-hmm.
So what it looks like today and what you're gonna see next year will be different because it will be based on the actual figures.
So nonetheless, we're looking at a $14,000 increase for balloon festival?
Mostly because of the bands and all the entertainment and the rentals and all have gone up. And Sean has increased his vendor fees to do that. But as you know, we take the vendor fees and we put that in a reserve account. So when we no longer have a TIP, we have a reserve account that will fund the balloon festival.
I just, I thought that was a lot.
I did too. And that will be one of the first places it's cut.
And then annual events, oh.
He's added.
7,900.
He's added some new events.
Yeah.
And again, he's gonna go out for, you know, what he can for donations and things like that. So.
And the 63,000, that took, took me there.
Well, that, that was the increase-decrease on the side. That wasn't the, the actual, that was my fault. I didn't see that. And I will break down the, the contractual services under economic development. Yeah.
So this is all pretty much what we're thinking, but we don't know till the mill rate's set.
That is exactly right. And the other thing is too, is, um, all of the money that we don't spend because these budgets, like right now I'm tracking, we aren't spending the entire TIP money. What happens at the end? That's when I come to you and say, this is what we had left over that we didn't spend. Now we can put that either in the dam reserve or we can put that in economic development. You know, that's what I'm.
Well, that's what I've noticed. And we have zero in dam reserve. Uh, we have zero in this budget for, for dam.
I thought I had 25.
Do you have something? I haven't seen in TIP yet. Yeah, right there, 25.
Yeah, I had 25.
Okay. Cause I didn't see anything in the regular budget.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that comes under the TIP payments, the capitals in the reserves. Yeah. And again, those TIP payments, if that budget comes in, they'll be reduced because we won't be collecting as much. So what you have in front of you is the wish list.
Okay.
That will get, that will get cut on a priority basis. And as I said, priority, number one is economic development.
Anything else? Only reward.
Capital and TIP for the capital, capital. The capital and TIP for the capital and municipal budget.
Capital, increase the revaluation to 100,000.
I didn't do that. That was a recommendation by the budget committee. The budget committee, there was 50, 50,000 in there. And the budget committee felt that if the revow was coming in at anywhere between 400 and 500,000, that it would be better to budget more rather than have a big payment. Did I say that right, Cindy?
Yes.
Oh, I saw the 50,000.
Oh, yeah. But I didn't, I didn't ask for it.
About the case for the TIP.
I don't know what you're talking about, TIPS. I don't.
That is a role to take for the TIPS.
We haven't decided to do that. That's a suggestion.
Yes. That, that, that did not come from me. That came from the budget committee.
And that would have to go into the regular assessing budget if we were gonna pay people. Yeah, we would have to switch some of that.
We're, we're working on a plan to do that. And.
Okay. So it, you know, forgive me if I know nothing about it.
So. I honestly, one opinion, I don't think we need to put $100,000 this year with what revenue's doing to us. I think that's too much. So. I, I think because, just because of what the, the revenue service is doing to us. And we don't know what the, we don't know what the rate's gonna be. And we know we have a little more money coming in from the, we talked one time about the solar farm that we will be able to look at.
The solar farm exemption was not removed effective this year.
Wasn't that nice?
Yeah. So we have, we have a couple more coming online next year.
That we're gonna be able to tax?
Yes. Yes. And they're about 5 million apiece.
So would you like me to reduce that assessing reevaluation back down to 50,000?
We haven't even got RFPs on that yet. So we don't know what it's gonna be.
All right. Perfect.
So.
The bids are out. So I will have those figures on the 16th.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we'll have the mill rate when?
On the 16th. Yes. And it's on the 16th.
On the 16th?
On the 16th. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Manager, anything else?
I know what I see.
You timed the hall.
Yes.
All right.
You got two more, two more passes by this before you have to vote it. What's, uh, you've got two more passes through this before you have to vote it.
Dan and I are already doing it right now.
There you go. Yeah.
What I will do.
Yes, I'm a vote no.
For the first public hearing, I will print out the cover sheets for each department with the changes that you folks have made and highlight those. So if there's more discussion on that, you'll have a fresh set of numbers in front of you.
So our next meeting is gonna be the 27th. At 6 o'clock.
Yes.